That was hilarious. You know who that guy was?
Recording in progress.
A call to order the Monday, November 6, 2023, Town Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:33. Clerk McCauser. Let's call the roll. It's hard to see. All councilors are present to help you out. I know you can't see the whole council.
I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, everybody's here, all in attendance.
Yep, everybody's here, yep.
Okay, thank you. That is a quorum of nine. If everyone will please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, corrigation, underground, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@grotonct.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Just have one name on my list. That's Mary Ellen Furlong.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mary Ellen Furlong, 57 Fishtown Lane, No Ink Mystic in Groton. I'll keep it very short tonight, but I'm concerned about the $400,000 proposed cost increase for the Par IV bathroom renovations. I don't think the council should automatically approve cost increases like this. It might be possible to scale back the renovations or postpone them. I note that Old Lime &amp; Lime recently set a plan to build new accessible bleachers back to the drawing boards after they received a bid of $467,000. The bid was three times the original estimate, which actually occurred in 2022. They felt that that was too high. Inflation is still very high. It might be prudent for Groton to either postpone it or scale it down. I also urge all Groton citizens eligible to vote tomorrow and to vote carefully. Goodbye.
Thank you. Mayor Joubert, is there anyone online this time?
I had no one signed up. I see one name on there. I'm not familiar with Tom Deal. Mr. Deal, what's that? Mr. Deal, could I ask?
No one signed up through me either.
What's that, for you?
No, no one signed up.
Yeah, my name is Tom Deal. Mark Berry asked me to join in case there were questions when the Park and Recreation Master Plan was discussed.
Okay, thank you.
So no one else?
Okay. Anyone else in the room which should speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, no separate discussion. And these items will take place unless cause shown prior to the time the council votes a motion to adopt. You're right.
I can read it better.
We'll do it right after the consent calendar. I make a motion to move the October 3, 2023 minutes, and the special trust fund contributions from October.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Jones. Okay, see no discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions carries unanimously nine, and in favor zero, opposed zero abstain. Counselor Parker?
We do have a proclamation this evening. So proclamation recognizing Deborah Monahan. Whereas upon the occasion of her retiring from Thames Valley Council for Communication Action, Inc., the Groton Town Council wishes to express sincere appreciation to Deborah Monahan for her 50 years of loyal and dedicated service to the community. And whereas Deborah had served on numerous state and local tax forces that created a better quality of life for thousands of Groton families. And whereas Deborah's vision helped to create affordable, safe childcare in Groton to allow families the ability to work, study, and improve the quality of life for their families. And whereas Deborah's energy and tenacity has helped spearhead increased investment in programs and policies that focus on alleviating poverty in the region. And whereas, under Deborah's leadership, Thames Valley Council for Community Action, Inc. grew from an agency that served thousands of people per year to an agency that serves tens of thousands of people per year. And whereas Deborah's vision helped to create the human service model that is currently used by the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services. And whereas Deborah's service will be missed by the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town Council of the Town of Groton, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, extends to Deborah Monahan a heartfelt thank you for her job well done and best wishes for her happiest of retirements. Date it at Groton, Connecticut, the sixth day of November, 2023, signed by Mayor Melendez.
Thank you. Onto communication and reports. I guess I'll start today. It's Monday. We typically meet on Tuesday. That's because tomorrow is Election Day. And I hope as many people as possible get out to vote. The polls will open at 6:00 a.m. They will close at 8:00 p.m. As long as you're in line by 8:00 p.m., you will be allowed to vote. So remember that. That's very important. Our polling locations, District 1 is Groton Public Library. District 2, Thames River Magnet School. District 3, Groton Municipal Building. District 4, Mary Morrison Elementary School. District 5 is the School Administration Building. That's on Flanders Road. District 6 is the Mystic River Magnet School, and District 7 is Fitch High School. Thank you. I'd also like to thank all the candidates. We had a lot of candidates come out that are interested in serving the town. Town of Groton is very lucky to have every one of them volunteer their time and efforts. So with that, we'll move to county.
I've got to leave in a few minutes for a little bit to sit up to RTM Finance Committee. Do you want me to give a quick report? Because I might not be back in time.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick things. One, Finance Department, we finally have enough staff in our Tax Division. We'll open back up during lunches to starting December 1st. We've been severely understaffed for a while, so at least that part of the department's getting there. IT Director position, Jay Main will be starting as our new director next Monday. So that'll be a welcome relief. Craig, there was a request for the AED machine, and Mystic, Greg Hanover's ordering that. And tentatively scheduled for the No Ink Main Street project, there will be a public listening session November 30th. That's the tentative date. More details to follow, and that's all I really have.
Okay. Counselor Bordelon?
I just wanted to thank you for looking into the AED machine for Mystic's, for outside of Mystic. Very helpful to have there. And do you know if it's going to be mounted to the outside or?
It'll be like those other two, sorry. It'll be like those other two outside ones with the box that automatically alerts the police if they're opened. So the same, you know, the more advanced ones, kind of, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Communication and reports, Counselor Guyaski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended long night at the Groton Elks. And I want to say congratulations to Groton Town Police Officer Devin Borland and City Police Officer Alejandro Rosa for being the Town of Groton's Police Department's Officers of the Year. Congratulations to them. Congratulations to all the other officers that serve our community. And also, I attended the Groton Little League's Trick or Treat, Trunk or Treat Track Event. Trick or, Trunk or Treat Halloween event. Thank you to all the organizers of Groton Little League for putting that on. It was wonderful to see many community members out there. And then, as the mayor said so eloquently earlier, tomorrow's Election Day, please come out and vote regardless of who you vote for.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
He'll report.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Would you mind please coming back to me?
Sure. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended, received various emails from, through the course of the last two weeks. I also attended the Law Enforcement Night at the Elks, which was terrific. And congratulations to our City of Groton and Town of Groton Police Officers, Officers of the Year. On Friday, I was able to attend through the Recreation Parks and Recs and Thrive 55, a event at the Tree Trails Adventure Rope and Zip Lining Park with a lot of other seniors and spent a lot of time up in the tops of the trees. I noticed Mr. Berry is here, and it was a great event with a lot of seniors climbing up and down trees all over the place and zipping through them. So it was just, it was fun, and I didn't realize I could do all that, so. It was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate the Fitch Football Team again for their tremendous win on Friday. It's an impressive year so far. They're 7-1, 4-0 in the league. Looks like they may hopefully capture the league championship if they can win on Friday. So we look forward to watching them again against Eastline this Friday. Also, I want to report, I did attend the Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce Innovation Center of Ribbon Cutting last week, and that was a monumentous occasion and meant a lot to me because I, back five years ago when I was at Trip, I actually started the, what was called at that time, the Maritime Entrepreneurial Center, which was an incubation period, and I traveled all around to promote that. So it was very important to me to see that come to fruition. So I just want to congratulate Tony Sheridan and the group for putting that together. It's going to help the region tremendously in economic development. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. I just also want to report as well, making sure everyone does come out and vote tomorrow on Tuesday. And also keep in mind that there is same-day voting registration if needed. I know I spoke with the registered voter today. I was helping out constituents in the community. They said they were open until 5:00, and then tomorrow, they're open up at 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the registrar's office. Everything's online for what you need to bring, so if you need that availability. And, you know, it is a good thing to check to make sure your name is still actively on the voter registration. And if it's not, then that way you can get in a timely manner to get that adjusted. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend Law Enforcement Night, as I have in the past. I want to thank the town staff for offering us tickets to go. I was in attendance at the football game at the high school along with Counselor McBride and attending Fitch Marching Band, so I had a bit of a conflict with obligations. I too want to congratulate the Fitch Football Team. I also want to congratulate the Fitch High School Marching Band for placing first in their Division 1A at their competition for states since we've met last. And then they went on to New England's and Pennsylvania on Saturday, which was a fun, quick three and a half hours down and three and a half hours back, but well worth it. They placed third in a field for nationals. So congratulations to these young folks, you know, the football as well as marching band. And it's important to remember that, you know, these youth were, a lot of the seniors that are going to be graduating this year didn't really have a season freshman year. And for them to perform the way that they have is just remarkable, and it shows their resiliency to overcome the adversities that they had. I know for football, they had barely, seven-on-seven, barely any contact freshman year. And for marching band, there was no season. And for cheer, I know it was virtual and things like that. So congratulations to them. I also, let's see. Did attend the race, the Tarzan Brown, I hope I'm saying the right race, this weekend in Mystic. I definitely was not running in it, not, I have in the past, but definitely did not this time. And, you know, was cheering on a few friends down there. Met with a lot of different people in the community, heard a lot of different concerns. And excited to move forward and do the work of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Westerveld?
Thank you very much. I also attended the Law Enforcement Night, and I'd like to congratulate all of those officers who were Officers of the Year throughout this region. It was a very impressive show, especially also our two officers for Groton City and Groton Town as well. No more.
Thank you. Counselor Jacone?
Thank you. Similar emails and events as the other councilors. Also attending the Citizens Police Academy, so anybody who wants to learn more about the police, try to look into that on their website. It's very hands-on, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I had prepared something for full transparency and accountability here. We received a notice that on October 31, a lawsuit was filed against the Town of Groton by 327-449 Hazelnut LLC. Owners of property between Hazelnut Hill and Flanders Road cited the requested host agreement for the data center, for which this council had a long meeting on 3/29/23 regarding this property and negotiations, which ended with a motion for the lawsuit, which I'll pick out pertinent pieces, to cease further discussions of a host agreement without engaging in good faith negotiations with the buyer, without considering additional offers made by the buyer, et cetera, during this special meeting. The suit further states that there was, this was the first meeting where the councilors discussed the host agreement. And it does go on to state, Franco stated, "We have not invited the developers to sit at the table, either to answer questions, for which we have done with every other development process that comes our way." With regard to the process, Franco stated, "I'm protesting the way this was handled." It goes on to state that the town attorneys were not present. It also states that Franco stated, "I will vote to postpone this so that we can get the terminology correct so that the town is not put in undue legalities." It says, Franco continued, "I think there's a lot of problems that we're dealing with right now, and we need to take a breather and come back to this when we have more options on this, that we are not qualified to do it right now. And here's the crux. The councilors did not vote on motions regarding the development of the data centers generally, but instead voted on motions specifically related to the buyer, including the development and the seller's property. The councilors did not adhere to advice from their attorneys when they approved the motion that included the exact terminology that the attorneys were concerned, could subject them or the town to litigation. That is the terminology that specifically identifies the property." It goes on to say, "A reasonably prudent council would have considered all of the factors that might impact the town and its residents before exercising its discretion and making its decision." Goes on to say that the property suffered significant depreciation in value to the property, and the suit is stating by millions of dollars. The motion on 3/29/22 passed 5 to 1 to 3. I was the only no vote. Parker, Westerveld, and McBride abstained. So to correct some community perception, I repeatedly wanted to postpone and warned of legal issues that could arise due to the council's handling of this issue. So I voted against it. Regardless of what the community thinks of me being in favor of data centers, I protected the town. That was the way I voted that night, and I was trying to protect the town, and if you can go back and watch the video. Thank you.
Thank you. Typically do not allow that. Okay, sorry. Onto Clerk of the Representative Town Meeting?
Do you want to, do you want to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay, so Representative Town Meeting will have a meeting next week, the 8th of November. Wait a minute. It's this week. Sorry. I've got my weeks mixed up. And the Finance Committee is meeting this evening on the items that were going to be sent to them. It's later this afternoon. They're going to, this evening, they're going to be meeting on the items that you have on your agenda this evening. You're going to be sending to them 653. And that's what I have for you from RTM.
Thank you. Clerk of the Council?
And for the Town Council, I just, you know, get you up to date on absentee ballots. We issued as of today, 4:30, we issued 425 ballots, and we've received 370 back. So there's still time. We will take ballots, absentee ballots by mail, by drop-off in person, or in the absentee ballot box that's placed in front of this town hall up until 8 o'clock tomorrow night. And that's that. And I wish you all very good luck, those of you that are running for reelection and those that are new to the stage.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Not seeing any questions. Thank you for that report. Onto committee reports. I don't know everything for the whole Personnel and Appointments Chair Jacone?
Thank you, Mayor. Know that we'll be going through appointments and reappointments here this evening on this agenda.
Okay. Rules Chair Parker?
No meeting, no report.
Public Safety Chairman.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. Okay. The council will stand in recess at 6:56.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm having trouble hearing most of you. Counselor Bordelon's very precise, and Counselor Franco, but most everyone else isn't speaking into their microphones. And so I don't usually have, I'm usually online for these meetings, but I've certainly had communication from citizens that's had the same issues of not being able to hear what's being said. So you really have to speak right into those microphones.
Okay, thank you. The council will stand in recess at 6:56, and we will... I will call to order the Monday, November 6, 2023, Town Council Committee, the whole special meeting to order at 6:57. All councilors are present, quorum of nine. Onto new business, the DECD grant, rowing barn roof replacement.
Do you want the motion first? Do you want the motion first?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution that the town manager or his designee accept brand funding from the State Bond Commission in the amount of $60,000 for re-roofing and repainting the rowing barn at Spicer Park and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3. I still move.
Second, Guyaski?
Moved by Parker, seconded by Guyaski. We have to Director Berry?
Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Here this evening, requesting approval from the council for DECD grant in the amount of $60,000 to replace the shingles and repaint the rowing barn at Spicer House. It's also the community boating house. It's home to the Fitch High School rowing team and also the community boating group, where we store ergs and other pieces of equipment, paddles, and life jackets. The roof has been patched a number of times over the last few years and is in dire need of replacement. And there was a picture of the barn in, by looking at the, yes. By looking at the roof and the exterior of the building, you can see that it is in need of both new shingles and repainting.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Do you know when the last time the building was, had a roof on it, or how old is that roof?
I don't. Public Works is generally responsible for buildings, and so I don't know.
And did you, this is going to be adequate to?
I'm, I'm hopeful. We had actually asked for more money, and it got cut back. I think if we can get the shingles done, that's the top priority, and we may have to come back for the repainting. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I think it's wonderful that you've received a grant for this. So my, similar to what I was going to ask was, the roof is the priority, and, but it looks to me that some of the wood might be maybe not in so great shape, and just to paint over it, is that what we should be?
No, we would not paint over rotten wood. If the wood is deemed... No, we would not paint over rotten wood. If the wood is deemed, well, there's, there's wood underneath the shingles, and we won't know the condition of that part of the roof until the shingles come off. So we may find that we need to replace part of the plywood that is typically underneath the shingles.
All right, as well as potentially?
Yes.
The walls as well? The walls, doors, maybe?
Yes, there could be other parts that need to be refurbished before they're repainted.
All right. Thank you for getting this grant. I appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, see no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Carers unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Parker, seconded by Counsel Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. We adjourn unanimously at 7:01. The town council meeting will be back from recess at 7:02. And we are on to new business, various appointments and reappointments, October.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution making the following appointments and reappointments to authorized agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees, also known as ABCs. Resolved that the town council appoints the following individuals to the authorized ABCs. As noted, appointment of Paul Fox D. to Essex Street Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force, term expiration 3/5/25. Appointment of Karen Hatcher D. to 30 Crosswind Drive, NOINC, Grand Housing Authority, term expiring 7/31/25. Appointment of Lori Hendrickson U. of 30 West Main Street, Apartment 1 Mystic, to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, term expiring 2/7/24. Appointment of Patrice Granitowski D. 30 North Prospect Street, to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, term expiring 2/7/25. Appointment of Tom, Thomas Olson U. 188 Crosswinds Drive, NOINC, to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, term expiring 2/7/24. Appointment of alternate of Donald Marchand Jr. U. 165 Shuville Road, Mystic, to the Board of Assessments and Appeals, term expiring 12/31/26. Appointment to alternate of Matthew Deon R. 169 Ridgewood Drive, Mystic, to the Board of Assessment and Appeals, term expiring 12/31/26. Reappointment of Robert DeVoe Jr. 33 Library Street, Mystic, to the Fair Rent Commission, term expiring 7/01/26. Reappointment of Guinevere Depot D. 162 Shenacosta Parkway, to the Fair Rent Commission, term expiring 7/1/25. Reappointment of Jamie Giordano U. 8 Bass Drive, to the Permanent School Building Committee, term expiring 09/29/26. Reappointment of David Russell D. 73 Ronald Road, to the Permanent School Building Committee, term expiring 9/29/26. And reappointment of Elizabeth Hogan U. 23 Friendship Circle, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term expiring 12/31/28. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Borlon.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded that.
Borlon.
And I'll speak on the motion just briefly. I think the Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee, again, just brings a recommendation forward to the council. We did our due diligence, and we had our interviews. We had some great candidates, some positions, more applicants than open positions, but I think I would say that we did our best in kind of vetting the candidates and the best based on their experience, just overall ideas that they bring to the table, right? We want to make sure our boards and commissions are energized and have, bring different perspectives and ideas. So I think I could fully say confident that we recommend these individuals to follow the ABCs. So thank you.
Thank you, Clerk McCaus. Did you get the second was Counsel Borlon? Okay. Any other discussion? Counsel Franco.
So my question is, is, and I'm not, I don't quite remember, is Mr. Olson also on another committee?
Do you have an answer, Mayor?
Sure.
Oh, glad. Through you, yes, he sits on the, I believe, Conservation Commission.
So is, that's a permanent committee. Is this Complete Streets also a permanent committee? Or?
Correct. Advisory capacity, through you, Mayor.
Can you explain?
I think the, okay, my understanding is you can't serve on two bodies that are, that are put together through state statute, and this one is, is not one of those. The clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, or the chair of personal appointments.
He's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so it's not permanent committees, it's ABCs?
He's correct. It's an advisory committee. Some, you can serve on more than one, just like the beautification committee was, you could be a town counselor and serve on it. It's the same idea.
Okay. Just curious as to if it was the same type. And when it comes to the Fair Rent Commission, was there an issue before on how many people were allowed to be landlords on that commission as well?
I really couldn't quite hear that. I assume that it's something to do with, there's an issue that this commission, Conservation Commission, would play in on, and then he would have to recuse himself?
No, no, no. No, I'm sorry.
If it's something that the commission has to vote on, so he wouldn't participate, except to, you know, give information, but he couldn't vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Sort of, sometimes. Sometimes I can, sometimes I can't.
I'm sorry. My question was about the Fair Rent Commission, and was there an issue on how many landlords are allowed to be on that commission, and are we, do we have the correct amount?
Yeah, you know, I'm getting half of the information from, you know, it goes in and out.
Does the chair know?
I don't know if it's my end or your end.
I see the Wi-Fi's going in and out.
Turn my video off, maybe that'll help.
The Wi-Fi's going in and out. I see the...
Okay, now give it, give it another whirl.
I see the...
Madam Clerk, can you hear me? Maybe it's just mics?
No, it says Wi-Fi going in and out. It keeps popping up on the screen.
Okay. I would just, from what I can recall to the best of my ability, Mayor, is that last, there was like a staggering of something. They were trying to stagger them based on landlords and tenants, but I think Counsel Guyaski was recently on it, so you might be able to assist me on that.
Counsel Guyaski, I know you served on this body.
Yes, I served on the Fair Rent Commission. There was, there's a cap, I can't remember the cap off the top of my head, of the amount of landlords that can serve, and the amount of tenants that can serve, and then there are at-large members to the committee, and then there are alternate members. I believe there are two alternate members and five full-time members.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking up right now, the body. Do you have more questions?
I just want to make sure that, because I had heard something previously about this, and I just want to make sure that we have, we have done this, the right amount.
I just apologize. I can't hear very well. It's just getting garbled, some of it. I really apologize. It must be my end, because I'm sure, I've been in that room, and you guys speak perfectly clearly. I can understand you in that room, so it must be on my end.
Okay.
Is it something that would prevent you from voting on this motion?
I'm sorry. I think your Wi-Fi's going in and out. That's why you're having trouble hearing us. I have the, the body in front of me. It looks like it's a body of five. At least one must be a landlord, at least one must be a tenant, and then the alternates have one landlord and one tenant. The tenant alternate is vacant, and there's a full position that is also vacant. So we have two appointments here. One's a reappointment, and they're both reappointments. So it doesn't fix any of the vacancy issues, because they're both reappointments.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that Commissioner Debo, Commissioner DeVoe, or I serve for the committee.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So I doubt we'd be running afoul of any of those concerns, since they're just both reappointments. Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Borlon.
I'm excited to see, you know, so many volunteers willing to serve in a volunteer capacity, and I'm excited to see that the Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force has another option. Is this in a, was this a vacant seat that is currently being filled?
Resilience and, oh, thank you. Resilience and Sustainability has two vacancies.
And this would leave one open, is that correct?
Let me check. Yep, it would.
No, it's great to see, you know, people willing to step up and volunteering. It's very important, and I appreciate everybody putting their names forward.
Okay. Okay, see no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Carers unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the DECD grant, rowing barn roof replacement. We just discussed this. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution accepting $60,000 from the State Bond Commission for repairs to the rowing barn at Spicer Park, whereas the town applied to the State Bond Commission for funding to repair the rowing barn at Spicer Park, and whereas the town received $60,000 from the State Bond Commission, now therefore be resolved that the town accept the $60,000 from the State Bond Commission to make the necessary repairs to the rowing barn at Spicer Park, and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones.
The second in that, sorry.
That's okay. That was Jones. Did you get that? Raise your hand, Counsel Jones. There you go. You raised your hand.
Oh, thank you.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Carers unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the CIP funding deficits, PNR.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
A resolution approving an additional $400,000 for the completion of the Par IV and Calvin Borough's bathroom projects, whereas the town approved funds in the FYE 22 budget to renovate the bathroom at Par IV and Calvin Borough's Park to meet ADA requirements, and whereas the town bid both projects, and whereas both projects' bids were higher than what was, what was budgeted, now therefore be it resolved that the town appropriate an additional $400,000 from capital improvement projects fund balance to complete the two bathroom projects and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Borlon. Counsel Borlon.
Do we have anybody to answer any questions tonight? That's my first question.
Director Barry might be able to help? Okay.
So I'm just trying to get an understanding of, like, if you can just kind of, first question, just walk us through, like, where we're at. So we haven't started it in its entirety. We're just short, or we, like, what?
That's correct. The project is not starting. We won't start until we have sufficient funds to do it.
And do you think this rising cost has to do with material costs?
Yes, this project is being managed by Public Works. Director Hanover is currently at an RTM Finance Committee meeting, going over these same questions, but, yes, it is related to the increased cost of materials.
And do you have any other drivers that might be, you know, for, for driving up the cost?
Any other drivers?
Any other factors that are driving the cost to go up?
Well, other than materials and personnel.
And then, you know, as it was stated, these would put these back, put these at ABA compliance?
That is correct.
Has there been any talk of trying to get any additional grants, or seeking any outside funding to help with the source, since we are short from the state, or any other outside resources?
I would have to confer with Director Hanover.
Especially when you're updating to an ABA compliant, there might be an opportunity that we may be missing, considering one is at a, well, they're both at a park, and fall under the recreation umbrella, so, and having equal accessibility under the ABA compliance is something that is, like, usually standard, what people want. So I'm just curious, you know, obviously, you know, thinking from the taxpayers' perspective, you know, it's absolutely a need, but $400,000 is a lot, but I'm also looking at, you know, is there any other grants? And again, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just, just, you know, people ask, like, were these questions asked?
Sure. Well, part of the funding for the Par IV was from the State Bond Fund, so we've already pulled in money from the State Bond Fund towards this project. Unfortunately, it was not enough, and I'm not sure if Public Works has looked at other grants to see, or other opportunities for grants, to see if there's more funding available.
Yeah, that would be my, that would be my question, just to see, you know, you know, not to stall it, but just to make sure that we've exhausted, you know, every possibility to, to help the taxpayers, and making sure that we, because definitely looking at that barn from that other picture, it's great we have the grant, but, you know, there, as it was stated by Counsel Franco, I was gonna say something, and I didn't want to repeat it, but it is, looks like there's probably gonna be some wood, not just under that roof, but also around it, that is gonna need some possibly replacement before painting, so, I just want to make sure we're getting the most for everything, is all, and, you know, there's opportunities out there to apply for funding, you know, I think it's in our best interest as a town to be seeking any and all opportunities, so.
And we frequently do that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Guyaski.
I know you mentioned, thank you, Director Barry, for coming. I know you just mentioned that there was some state bond money that came with the Par IV renovation. Is there a timeline on that? Is there, like, a deadline to have the project complete by that?
I'm not sure. I'm actually not that familiar with state bond money. That isn't something that I have dealt with, so I would have to check with Director Hanover to see if there's a timeline for that project to be completed. I think that money was approved in FYE 22.
Thank you. Counsel Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Barry, please refresh my memory. Would this include a contingency, or no?
Yes, I think Director Hanover said it was a 10% contingency, yes.
I want to make sure. I didn't see that on the resolution, so, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Carers unanimously. Okay. Carers eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Westerville. Onto adoption of 2023 Recreation Master Plan.
Resolution adopting the 2023 Recreational Master Plan, whereas the town contracted Barry Dunn to update the 2009 Recreational Master Plan, and whereas Barry Dunn conducted a thorough community engagement process and level service analysis, and whereas considerations were developed to identify potential opportunities to match the needs expressed by the community, now therefore be resolved that the town council approves the 2023 Recreational Master Plan as presented.
Second.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Borlon. Counsel McBride.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that during the committee, the whole meeting, I was not in favor of this project, not necessarily because of the projects, but because of the funding source was not received, and I didn't think it was proper for us to vote in favor of something without the funding source being known. However, recently, Town Manager Burton, his report did provide information that showed the exact amount of the funds that we have received, and therefore I would support this project, because now we do know the funds that have received, and we can, we can match the appropriation with the actual money.
Point of information, is he about the NIPS, or is this?
We're a master plan.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize. I'll save, I'll save that for later.
Okay. Thank you.
Way to move the meeting along. One way to get out of here.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
I'll read the next one.
Okay.
Should I just do the last resolved?
Yeah, usually the, the name and the title and the result.
A resolution approving the use of two thousand and twenty-three funds collected from surcharge of miniature liquor bottles. Resolve that the Town Council authorized all funds collected in calendar year two thousand and twenty-three be allocated as followed. Fifteen percent be provided to the City of Groton, forty-two point five percent to the Town's Department of Parks and Rec for the purchase of stellar trash compactors, forty-two point five percent to the Department of Public Works to use towards the purchase of many trash vacuums, and be it further resolved and to refer the matter to the RTM per Rule six-point-five-point-three. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Parker. Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn by Counselor Jacome, a second by Counselor Jones. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. We are adjourned unanimously at seven-twenty-two.